Good evening. It is Tuesday, April 12, 2022 at 5:36 PM. My name is Joe Baker and am Mayor of Kennedy, Texas. It's my honor to welcome everyone here tonight to all this public hearing of the Kennedy City Council to order. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, we do not have a quorum for the public evening, public hearing this evening, so we will have to consider this meeting adjourned, and then we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our regular scheduled meeting. Apologies for the delay. Good evening. It is Tuesday, April 12, 2022 at 6:00 PM. My name is Joe Baker and am Mayor of Kennedy, Texas. It is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One Councilmember Cindy Sines is not present this evening. District Two Councilmember John Rodriguez.
Here.
District Three Councilmember Chris Parker also is not present this evening. District Four Councilmember James Douglas.
Here.
District Five Councilmember Sandra Schultz.
Here.
Three members of the city council are present, and we have a quorum present this evening. I would like to welcome Pastor Christy Mejia with Ella Apacento Alto Church, who has so graciously agreed to be here this evening to lead us in prayer. Pastor Mejia?
I will start. Hello? I'll start with the scripture. First Timothy 2:1-4. "I exhorte thee therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may be, we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior." I pray, Lord, as we bow our heads today, Father, that you would instill a spirit of humility in us all, Lord, that we recognize you as God above all, Lord, God of all creation, that we recognize that you, Lord, are the one who places us in positions of authority and power for your good and perfect will, and that we recognize and that we are humble and know, Lord, that you raise kings, Lord, and you bring them low. So we thank you for your mercy upon each and every leader here tonight in this council, Lord, and any leaders and any sector of society in this community, Lord. We thank you that you have mercy and allowed it in positions of authority, Father, and we pray, Lord, that they recognize that that honor is given by you, Lord. I pray, Lord, for heavenly wisdom and heavenly discernment, Lord, not the discernment of man, Lord, for we fail you each and every day, Lord, but your heavenly, perfect wisdom from above, Lord, to lead the people of the city of Kennedy on your righteous path, that we may all live in your true peace within us. I pray, Lord, that we all walk in the counsel of the godly Lord, so that we may establish and build and then bear the fruit of our Lord in this city of Kennedy until you return for those who have called upon the name of your Son, Jesus, for salvation. I pray for protection over all these council members, Lord, everyone in here at the sound of, under my voice, Lord, protection for them and for their families. I pray that the Holy Ghost would draw them into salvation, for this is the will of God. This is your will, Father, above all in heaven. Our holy Father in heaven is that we would all be drawn into your merciful salvation in the name of Jesus. And I close with the final scripture. Philippians 2:3-4. "Let nothing be done through selfish ambition or conceit; but in lowliness of mind let each esteem others better than himself. Let each of you look out not only for his own interest, but also for the interests of others." In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mejia. Everyone will remain standing for the press allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 11, Citizen Comment. Mr. Lynn, do we have any one signed up for citizen comments?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment at this time? If not, then we will continue on to Agenda Item Number 12, Proclamation, Fernando Martinez Day. I have a proclamation here that I'd like to read. Whereas we are here today to express our appreciation to Officer Fernando Martinez and to honor him for his distinguished 21-year career with the city of Kennedy, and whereas Fernando began his career with the Kennedy Police Department on August 21, 2000, as a reserve officer and started full-time August 24, 2001, as a police officer, and whereas Fernando has played an important role with the city while serving his community as a police officer, his assignments during his career include police officer and patrol and SWAT, and whereas Fernando currently holds a Master Peace Officer Certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, his departmental awards include a 20-year award as well as letters of commendation from citizens, supervisors, and local law enforcement agencies. And whereas, on behalf of the entire city council, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Fernando for his loyalty to the city of Kennedy over the past 20 years and wish him much happiness as he begins this exciting new chapter in his life. Now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of the city of Kennedy, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12, 2022, as Fernando Martinez Day in the city of Kennedy and urge all citizens and employees to join me and the city council in congratulating Fernando on an outstanding career in the city of Kennedy and expressing our sincere appreciation to him for his unwavering dedication and service. We wish him many years of happiness and good faith. In witness whereof, I am here and to set my signature and seal it, City of Kennedy, this 12th day of April, 2022. I don't believe Officer Martinez is here this evening?
Um, no, sir. He is not.
No, sir, he's not. We had a prior agreement.
Well, Lieutenant Elizondo, if you'll pass along our thanks and gratitude.
I absolutely will, sir. Thank you.
We would appreciate it. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 13, Proclamation, National Sex Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. I have another proclamation to read. Whereas every 68 seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted, and in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in fiscal year 2021, Guadalupe Valley Valley Family Violence Shelter rendered 1,135 services to 210 survivors of sexual violence and provided 61 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault exams. Whereas, according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas, most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and 91% of victims did not report to police. Whereas, it is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas, national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas, police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve in the prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas, sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the efforts in sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas, national and community organizations, businesses in the private sector, and the media are urged through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. Now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Kennedy and all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those working toward awareness and prevention and by participating in community efforts. In witness whereof, I am here and to set my signature and seal it, the city of Kennedy, this 12th day of April, 2022. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 14, Proclamation, Kennedy Neck and Back Clinic. Whereas, the business community of the city of Kennedy is crucial to the city's economic health, and whereas, the revenue generated by the business community allows the city to provide services that positively affect the quality of life for its residents. And whereas, the jobs created by the business community support the quality of life that Kennedy residents enjoy. And whereas, the business community provides valuable support that fosters and encourages public-private partnerships through institutions such as the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, the public schools in the community, and others. And whereas, the city values its existing business community and commits to making every effort to retain that strong economic base. And whereas, the city recognizes and appreciates the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by Kennedy Neck and Back Clinic. Howard Wayne Hawkins, DC, established this practice about seven years ago and offers the Kennedy Community Chiropractic Care, DOT Pre-Employment Physicals, Drug and Alcohol Testing, to name a few of the services provided. Now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, publicly commend Kennedy Neck and Back Clinic and hereby proclaim April 22, 2022, as Kennedy Neck and Back Clinic Small Business of the Month. In witness whereof, I am here and to set my signature and seal it, the city of Kennedy, this 12th day of April, 2022. And I don't believe we have a representative from the business here, but we want to express our congratulations to them. We also have a plaque that we will make sure that they are presented with, and I'll take a moment to read the plaque. The city of Kennedy, in joint partnership with the Kennedy Economic Development Corporation and the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, would like to recognize Kennedy Neck and Back Clinic for April 2022, Small Business of the Month in recognition of your valuable contribution, dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed in the city of Kennedy for small businesses. Awarded this 12th day of April, 2022. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 16, Departmental Reports. And I believe we're going to have an abbreviated list of reports this evening. Is there a Public Works Report, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, would you mind? You have in your packet a copy of my reports that were submitted for the month of March, 2022, and I'm going to read over a brief summary of what those reports contain. Management activities, we met with engineers and contractor on Waco, Live Oak Sewer Line Project, to check on the progress of that particular project. We performed an annual evaluation on one of our employees, Chris Cortez. We submitted the required information for the emergency preparedness plan to TTEQ as required. Most projects that we're working on, we inspected the progress on the Waco-Live Oak Sewer Project. That project is just about wrapped up. On the Loma Alta Project, all the main boards have been done and connected. The only thing that's left is three meter boards that are going to be done up on the hill, and those are scheduled soon. I don't have a definite date, but I will be on the contractor to find out when we're going to get them done. And then, well, 14 had gone down. We lost a pump and motor on that. It has since been replaced, and it's back in service. Everything looks good there. The 800 KW generator has been set and started at the RO plant. We did have the company representatives come in and crank it up and run it. It runs like a champ. And from inside the building, it sounds like a car dropping off. It doesn't make a whole lot of noise. It's very well insulated, so.
So it can handle everything in full capacity?
It does.
The whole plant?
It does. It can handle the whole plant at full capacity. Yes, sir. And the transfer switch here has been installed and connected, but there's still some wires that need to be landed on that transfer switch so that when the generator does come on, it will run the whole plant. And that is ongoing work there. Some training activities that we had, our month V, Texas Water Utility Association Meeting was held here in Kennedy. We hosted it. In attendance at that meeting was myself, Rolando Rodriguez, Chris Cortez, and Councilman Rodriguez. And then, we had a total of 21 area operators that came in for that meeting. And then, the reports listed below are in your packet there. The Public Works Activity Report I just read to you. You have a copy of the RO MRR. You have a copy of the water loss report for the month. You have a copy of the water state restrictions, and the field operations report, the wastewater treatment plant report, and the SSO. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Parrot is. This landing that they have to do, is that going to require a shutdown of the system for any length of time?
It may require a shutdown of a part of the plant so that they can disconnect the wiring and reconnect it back. But we don't expect any more full shutdowns.
How many generators do we have at the wells? Are we still waiting on those?
We're still waiting on those. The last update that I got, the wells, the well generators are supposed to ship out June 22nd.
We're making progress.
We're making progress.
Yeah, this is pretty good.
All the pads have been poured and the conduits, everything is in place. We're just waiting on the generators so we can hook them up. It's getting going.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Parrot is, thank you for your report and congratulations on the successful test. We're glad to see that move forward.
Thanks, sir.
Next, under Agenda Item Number 16, Departmental Reports, is the Police Chief Report. And I believe Lieutenant Elizondo will be present this afternoon.
How are y'all? Doing good, okay?
Fine, good evening.
Okay, so I've got a couple of notes that Chief left me first to go over. Just spare it with me for a moment. I'm not sure if he gave you all the copy of these. He received three grants, $2,000 from Walmart, $4,000 from Conoco, and we also have a grant in the state to reimburse costs for new body cameras, which have already been implemented and passed out to the officers. We would like to once again thank Walmart for the kind of support and also the extra money the sector will go towards supplies and equipment for the police department's needs. We also have our first two hotels that have completed the Crime Free Prevention Program. Candlewood Suites and Best Western will receive signs and certificates that show they are part of the program. We are pleased that those two hotels have joined. So they've basically been certified. So if somebody were to look up their pages on the internet and stuff, it would have on there that they have completed that and stuff. And of course, they have to go through their training scenarios and stuff. And we're real happy to have them. Hopefully, everybody else will follow suit shortly. The copy of the report that y'all had received from Chief, I'll go over a couple of the stats for the month of March. Calls for service were 678. Officers assistance was 150. Accidents, 15. Arrests, 10. Or excuse me, I'm sorry. Accidents were 10. No, no, I'm sorry. Got off the wrong column. Forgive me. Okay, so arrests were 10. Class C arrests were zero. EWI arrests were zero. Juvenile incidents were four. Theft and burglaries was eight. The citations were 522. Warnings were 420. Traffic stops, 311. Truck route violations, 17. MHMR, 3. Cases cleared, 23. Building checks, 165. And assaults or sexual assaults was three for the month of March. Also have a copy of animal control report that was left me by Chief. Service calls for animal control was 63 this month. Dog pickups were six. Cat pickups were five. Owner reclaimed two of the animals that were picked up. Adoptions were two. Warnings issued were 70, and citations issued for various violations was seven. And also, as a side note, baby buzzard was roof of my house on 743 Graham Road.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
While you're on the animal control sheet, I'd just like to say, I took a tour out there.
Yes, ma'am.
A few months ago. And I was extremely impressed. The place is really taken very well care of. There's a lot of work needs to be done out there. So we might want to talk about that later. But those guys are doing a fabulous job. If you ever get a chance to go see the animals that are out there, they're so well taken care of. The facility is spotless. I was very impressed.
Great. Wonderful.
Yeah, I'm glad I went out there.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll try to pass it off to Ramirez.
They're doing a really good job.
I would appreciate it.
Lieutenant, could you please pass it on to the chief? I mean, a little bit more patrol on Maytag in that area.
Absolutely.
And a lot of people speeding in that area.
On Maytag itself, sir?
Maytag, coming off of Maytag, like down Dewick Street. I don't know what they think they're doing, but I guess they want, the other day, three cars were... The way I can explain is they looked like they were playing chase.
Yes, sir.
And over 50 in the neighborhood. That's pretty fast. Just hate for a kid to be riding a bike or walking down the street. A lot of kids walk in that area.
Sure.
Somebody, if they're going to see somebody on the hill.
Absolutely, I agree.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir. No problem.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Elizondo?
Lieutenant, I understand that Robbie, our K-9 officer, recently received the donation of some body armor. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is correct. It's a, we had actually started looking into it while Robbie was still in training. And we had looked at a couple of different places, and I pulled that one up off the internet and a little bit more research on it. It required to say a little, kind of a simple preliminary application process. And once it was accepted and stuff, then it began the longer application process. So yes, hopefully, in eight to 10 weeks, I believe, it should arrive at the police department. So we're pretty excited. And again, they usually average a cost of anywhere between $1,000 and $2,000 and stuff. But this one's going to be bullet resistant as well as stab resistant. I mean, again, Robbie's primary job is, of course, for narcotics detection. But again, if you happen to have somebody in a vehicle that may have narcotics, you never know what their intent may be toward that animal in that office. You know, so again, this gives him the same level of coverage as Officer Mike Collins handled.
That's great news. Like every officer, we want to keep Robbie as safe as possible.
Absolutely. I agree 100%.
That's great news. Any other questions for Lieutenant? Yes, sir. LT, didn't Robbie just recently pass a certification as well?
Yes, he absolutely did. We're very proud of him and stuff. Tell you those brown eyes, it's kind of melts you when you look at him and stuff. I mean, he's wonderful when he jumps into the office and stuff. But yeah, we're very proud of him. He's a really, 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 just a very well behaved dog. And him and Bobby just kind of, it's interesting, of course, Bobby and Robbie, they have just have this bond. It's like they sit there and they look at each other, and you're not sure what either one of them's thinking, but you kind of appreciate it for what it is, you know? Again, but yeah, he sure did. With flying colors, I heard.
That's great. That's good.
There are no other questions, so thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Streets and Parks. Do we have a Streets and Parks report? No, not tonight. Okay. Then that brings us to Agenda Item Number 17, City Manager Report. Mr. Lynn?
Can I ask y'all a question? And this goes for all y'all in the audience, too. Why would I say everything tastes better with Bluebonnet on it? Have you ever tried to eat a Bluebonnet on a piece of toast? Next week, guys, Bluebonnet days are back. So hope everyone turns out for our Bluebonnet Festival. The chamber's working really, really hard. Parade's going to be next Friday, I mean, next Saturday and next Friday. We're going to have music and that. It's going to be out at the park, so I just wanted to bring that up real quick. Also, the flags on Southbound 181, as you're coming in from Kern City, they're there. And of course, the flag, the quorum says if we fly those things at night, we've got to have lights on. Unfortunately, we don't have lights on because the lights don't work. Mr. Hernandez has reached out to Kirby Electric. We're going to put some LED lights on those so it can be nice and bright. So it's going to make it look really, really nice, the way it should be when it comes in. So if you're driving by and you see the lights out, we're aware of it. We're working on it. Kirby's coming out to take care of it. So just to let everybody know, we're on top of that as well. Y'all may have noticed over here on the side of the building, a while back, I made the comment, we had a little pilot program going on with food trucks and that, and we were kind of testing the waters, see how things go. We were hoping to get a more permanent location for food trucks to bring them in, to help out vendors and bring some different cuisine to the city of Kennedy, those kind of things. We haven't been able to move forward too much with the places that were number one on our radar yet, but we're still looking at them. So we're kind of converting this little unused grassy knoll area over here. We're putting in some 30 amp, some 50 amp electrical outlets out there. We're going to move all the food trucks up there. So Porter's Coffee will move from down below to up top. And then anybody else who feels that an application for food truck to come out here, they'll be able to hook up to that as well. And so we'll be able to have whoever wants to participate as a food truck vendor out here up there. It also gives us a good gauge of how the residents of Kennedy are going to respond to actually a food truck court. We'll put some seating area up there, that kind of thing, so people can just take a chair or sit down and take a little bite while they're eating and enjoying the cuisine and that. Hopefully, with some of the people who are coming in for Bluebonnet, some of the other events that happen throughout the year, we might be able to casually invite them to come in up here and set up on a little bit of a more permanent basis. So just letting you know what's going on up there. In addition to everything that's going on, as Mr. Parrot has said, the CDG grant that we had going on down Live Oak and Waco's almost completely wrapped up. Where we are on that is Cortez is, they're still going compacting the road base. When they get done doing compacting the road base, Dirk Voice is going to come back in. They're going to overlay those two streets, just like they did Graham Road from curb to curb. They're going to mill it up, make it look really, really nice. Waco already has curbs, so they're not going to add anything there except for milling for the street. Live Oak is going to get the, they're going to get the little runners on the side, ribbons, as they call them, to make it look really nice. So residents down on Live Oak and Waco are going to get basically brand new streets as well. But that going on, just got that. East Main's practically done finally. They're finishing the quorum, the re-quorum, I should say. The five panels today, they were going out. It's going to be ready for council tonight. So, and it's looking really good down there, but they re-quit them. So once that all gets done, East Main should be complete. The guy should be getting off of that project completely in the full of that. And then we'll begin cleaning up the RCP and all that that's down there. We're going to probably use the RCP that we, that's usable elsewhere in the city and that. It's not going to crush up any of them, so.
They did put rebar in those areas, right?
Yes, sir, they did. They went back in with rebar.
Everything that they dug up, the rebar?
Yes, sir. They did go back in with rebar. GLO grant, we're still waiting on Lainford to complete the environmental report. They have an estimated completion time of July 25. They'll have that environmental report done. That's an imperative stepping stone in this grant. We can't get the authorization to use grant funds until the environmental report's been completed and approved by the city. So GLO did change that. Instead of going to the GLO for them to approve it, and now it comes to the city for us to take a look at and approve it. And then the GLO moves forward with the AUGF, as they call it, for the grant funds. And then that's when everything gets real fun, because once we have the availability of grant funds, we can begin to rock and roll as fast as people can move with everything around us. Design has yet to begin. Dussette has yet to begin the designing of everything. The pre-design hasn't been done yet and submitted in for my review. It'll send to city council yet, but I'm sure Dussette will get on that sometime. The Convention Center, Mr. Berger, I'm still waiting on the topographic survey. He did make revisions to the bride room we talked about, where we flipped the restroom to the exterior, flipped bride room, moved on the side, closed the exterior entrance to the bride room, so the only way in and out of the bride room is now through the ladies' room, so Mr. Berger did do that, make those revisions that y'all asked for, so. DR forty-four eighty-five FEMA grant that we're going after, the TDM portal has been set up in new projects, and they're waiting on the project's amounts. We're looking at two projects with the T, six hundred and sixty-six million dollar grant allocation total. We're looking at infrastructure retrofit in some areas throughout time, and then we're looking at flood mitigation, we're focusing primarily on the Nottingham, Bel Air, Robinhood area, and all that that attaches to that for the flood mitigation from there, so. The engineer is doing his due diligence and studying the area, everything done, we're just waiting on him to get to the point where he's calculating the engineer's estimates of probably the cost, so we can move forward with the final application. We've only got to the twenty-nine, the very most submitted that, so.
So that includes the Live Oak area behind, parallel to Fifth Street, which is the back coming off of Sadiq back there?
Yes, sir.
All of that, all that creek area back there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we've got some street projects going on that are on this agenda that you guys are gonna be handling and working to award contracts to, but just to let you know kind of the timelines and things before we get there. Doll Street was originally gonna begin first, but the ribbons haven't come in yet, so they're gonna start Houston Street, calling council approval and get that done. They're claiming it should only take about a day and a half to two days to do Houston from start to finish, so we're gonna see how long that really takes. I'm not holding them to that timeframe, but we'll see. They'll get it done pretty quick, Dirk Boys has done some great jobs since they've been in town, so I have confidence in them. As soon as they get done with that and the ribbons come in, they'll move straight from Houston Street over to Doll Street, and they'll begin tearing up Doll and, help us, Tom?
Dolan Jones.
Jones, Dolan Jones, right there behind Taco Bell, so they're gonna take care of all that. If it doesn't have curves, they're gonna put in concrete ribbons around there, sort of look real nice, it's gonna be milled, everything's, these two streets, just so that everyone understands, it'll be just like Graham Road, the con, it'll be completely milled, so at the end of the day, we're gonna have Graham, the con, the booth, then we have Live Oak, Waco, Houston, Doll, and Jones will all be completely milled. Then there's a section of Nuaces between Graham and Little Street over here, we're gonna chip seal that, that's gonna begin in the next thirty days. And then Mr. Hernandez and I was talking about another street to chip seal, and we thought that Bluebonnet Circle over by KISD would be a real good street to go ahead and chip seal, so sometime in the next forty-five days, we're gonna chip seal, that's the plan in the next forty-five days, to chip seal Bluebonnet Circle as well. And then from there, we'll go into some of the other districts and look at areas to chip seal as well.
I have a question, Mr. Lynn. If they're gonna, when they're gonna go ahead and start Houston Street, they have enough manpower to work both areas once the ribbons come in, because I don't wanna get halfway on Houston Street and then they jump over there, and they're short on manpower, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
And they leave, leave a section of Houston Street halfway done or milled, and then they're, then they're in between a rock and a hard place.
Right.
I'd rather see them finish one, start one, finish one, and then jump to the other one.
Yes, that's exactly what Dirk Boys is doing.
Unless they have enough crews for both roles.
They'll start Houston Street, and they'll work it start to finish, and then when they're done with Houston Street completely, then they'll move over to Doll, or just trying to give time for the ribbons to come in, but they wanna get busy and moving along, so.
Yeah, yeah, and they'll send some weight.
Right, and, and, yeah, that way they're taking care of that. And just some miscellaneous things that have gone in the city of, as y'all know, we have the rideaway, Dr. Buffett's, due to the city, unfortunately for that rideaway, there's a lot of landowners between here and both that need access, and so as things have been going, we've been working with them, reaching out to the GLO, making sure it's okay before we do anything, so we've been taking care of that. And then the lights of Johnny Bear Field are working, and they're continuing to work to fix the scoreboard from the piazza whenever everything was done, when the complex was put in, all the tear up, and they're working because of what we're working here, so.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn on current projects, future projects, current operations or future operations? But, Mr. Lynn, you wanna continue on with financials?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so as we began, we'll start on the one-ten side, which is available liquidity. And in your packets, I believe they put the financials in at the, at the back, not noted, but the consent agenda. The general fund has about two point nine in it, the hotel motel tax of one point oh two six, water and sewer eight hundred and fifty-three, and bathing fund has two point four five in it, that gives us total of about seven point three two million in our taxable accounts. At the time of the current financials for everybody, we have one point seven five, I mean, one point seven two in the bank as cash, which gave us nine point oh four five total available liquidity, which gives us about six point six seven a month's worth of expenditures we can pay on that, so that's in that six month range that we're looking for, so we're going to get there. Revenues for the month in the general fund are five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, year-to-date's four point three million, that puts us at fifty-four point eight two percent of our budget, and we're paying right now at fifty percent of our budget, so we're outperforming our budget there. However, those numbers are gonna start going down, because we're already in on April now, so tax revenue, which is a good portion of that, is starting to die off at this point again. We spent five hundred and thirty-five thousand in the general fund for a total of three point two three million for the year, which is forty point eight percent of our budget. Again, we're paying the fifty percent, so we're outperforming the budget, we're spending a lot less than what we're taking in. Water and sewer, revenues are down to five hundred and thirty thousand, that's primarily due to T, the prison, and Ashland's water rates are down, their consumption is, I understand the prison has dropped the population, which would explain that. We have three point seven million total year-to-date, we're trading at forty-four point six on our budget for revenue, which is under the fifty percent, so we're underperforming our revenues right there, and that gives us a total of forty-nine point five eight percent versus fifty percent. While it's close, we're still underperforming the budget by about point four two percent on revenues total. We spent six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in the water and sewer department, about three point two seven for the year, that gives us thirty-nine point thirty-one percent, which is way under the fifty percent we're paying to, so they're spending a lot less than they're taking in, so they're controlling expenditures very well, so we're outperforming the budget there. So total expenditures are coming to about forty point oh four, so we're really outperforming the budget there. And we still have a, an increase of one point five million when we do our total year-to-date revenues over expenditures for both departments, so we're doing real well financially, so.
Any questions from the council regarding financials? Well, thank you for your report, Mr. Lynn. This brings us to Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items requiring action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated, by a single motion, second, an affirmation, majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, consideration and approval of regular city council meeting minutes of March eighth to twenty twenty-two, and special city council meeting minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Item B, consideration and approval on financials. Is there any questions or discussion regarding Agenda Item Eighteen, Items A or B? If there is no questions, if there are no questions, if there's no discussion on Agenda Item Eighteen, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Eighteen?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eighteen.
I'll second it.
With a motion from Councilmember Douglas, and a second from Councilmember Rodriguez, I'll call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. This brings us to the next section of the agenda, ordinance, resolution, other action items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. We are going to move one of the agenda items up in the order at this point, since we have some out-of-town visitors, and we don't want to keep them any later than we have to, so they can get on the road and get safely where their destination is. So instead of item number nineteen, we will move to item...
Twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, consideration and possible action to ratify the City of Kennedy's proposed conveyance of nineteen point eight one two eight acres of property situated along the Escondido Creek to the San Antonio River Authority under the drainage exception of Texas Local Government Code Section two-five-three point zero-zero-one B in regard to ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-six. And it says there's a presentation from our city attorney, Ms. Cad.
This is really about transparency. So the city, at the last regular meeting on March eighth, already made a motion to do this conveyance after an executive session item. However, the executive session item on that agenda did not specify the acreage, so I just wanna make it extremely clear, even though we are able to go and use this exemption, you know, that exempted the city from the usual precautions of having to do a mandatory action or run newspaper notice for three weeks in a row, and the public hearing was something else that I wanted to just do to, for transparency's sake. The ordinance is the same thing, I just wanted the agreement to match what Sarah is also going to pass as a resolution, or has proposed as a resolution.
Any questions from the council, from Ms. Cad?
I don't have any questions, I just, we're, we have to make a change to this ordinance, twenty-two dash oh-six, 'cause in the second paragraph on page two, it says the city has held a public hearing, since we didn't have the hearing, we would need to amend that.
Yes.
Any other questions from Ms. Cad?
Ms. Cad, would we just remove that, could we just remove that paragraph?
You could, yes, you could say that we noticed for a public hearing, and that it could not be that.
Any further questions from the council for discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Number Twenty-five?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Twenty-five, ordinance twenty-two dash oh-six as amended.
You have a motion, Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There was a second from Councilmember Rodriguez. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome to leave if you'd like at this point, but thank you for being here. Galen, do you have something to say?
Just briefly?
Sure, please. Not, not at all, come forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members, for helping us preserve the Escondido Creek Parkway for as long as possible. And just briefly, two thousand and twelve is when the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority interlokal agreement to start this project and became partners in it, and along the way, we added many other partners that funded, helped fund it, including many individuals, to the point to where we got a park that's, a community park that's the envy of many communities that are even bigger than us. And it's been a good partnership, we, none of us could have done this on our own, but together we managed to get it done, and I wanna thank y'all for that, and hopefully our, the relationship between the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority will continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll take this opportunity to thank Galen Elke and Kathy Elke, and as he said, so many people who worked hard to make this park a reality. I was present for that first meeting, and it took a lot of time and effort and perseverance, but what a beautiful park it is. I, I'm out there often, and I get compliments from people who are passing through town and stopped in to see it, and it's a wonderful thing for the City of Kennedy, so thank you, Galen, thank you, Kathy, and thanks to everyone who supported this park. So that brings us back up to Agenda Item Number Nineteen, consideration and possible action to approve a request to vacate and replat of Lot Five and Lot Six, Block Seventy-four at the City of Kennedy, Carnes County, Texas, as shown on the plot of record in Cabinet A, page one forty-nine of the plot records of Carnes County, Texas, and to be known as Lot Five A, Block Seventy-four in the City of Kennedy, Carnes County, Texas, and being further known as One Ninety-Eight Runge Street. Is there a presentation on this item, Mr. Lynn? Do you want a second, ma'am?
I have a member of the PNC here.
You can speak, I can speak, either way you want me to say.
Okay, so the PNC heard this at the most recent PNC meeting, and we do have members of the PNC here, if you have any detailed questions, they did approve this replat by Nassau, members that are present. This is just a function where we just go back and just move forward with approval or denial, if y'all have any questions, but I don't see any personal reason why, I think this is gonna be a good thing for residents.
They put in a mobile home over there, didn't they?
Yes, right, that's what they're gonna do.
I went by those.
They are putting in a mobile home, and then measurements have all been done, they've done the measurements to make sure all sets are all set, and everything fits perfectly, so that's why we approved it.
All right. Okay, very good. Any questions or discussion from the council regarding Agenda Item Number Nineteen? If there are no further questions or discussion, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Nineteen?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a request to vacate and replat to Lot, of Lot Five and Lot Six, Block Seventy-four in the City of Kennedy, Carnes County, Texas, as shown on the plot of record in Cabinet A, page one forty-nine of the plot records of Carnes County, Texas, and to be known as Lot Five, Block Seventy-four in the City of Kennedy, Carnes County, Texas, and being further known as One Ninety-Eight Runge Street.
I'll second.
So a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, and a second from Councilmember Douglas, I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Twenty, discussion and possible actions to approve the release of lien for Kenneth R., not sure I'm pronouncing this correctly, Beiderger?
Beiderger.
Beiderger, for lots fourteen and twenty-five feet of fifteen Block A in the Elcrest Park Edition of the City of Kennedy, in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars for payment received on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Lynn, is there a presentation?
Ma'am. Okay, in your package, you have a copy of the lien that was put on the property and then a copy of the receipts where we received the money and that. The reason why we're doing this like this, instead of, just coming across my desk, and you just go ahead and taking care of this, is because Mr. Alby R. put the mayor's name on this, and so the mayor can sign that the council has to give the mayor the authority to sign this off, so. But we have received our payment for it, so it's only right up here, really.
Any questions or discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Twenty? If there are no further questions or discussion, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Number Twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Twenty.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Schultz? I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. This brings us to Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, discussion and possible action to declare Officer Martinez, Glock twenty-two handgun with serial number MME three thirty, as surplus, and authorize the unit to be sold as a gift for sale... for sale for one dollar. Mr. Lynn, is there a presentation?
So, Chief Ash approached me about this. It was determined that Mr., I mean Officer Martinez was going to go ahead and issue the fire. It's kind of a thing that police officers do when they retire. The department likes to be queaked to them, their service revolver as a parting gift. And the way I understand it, Chief Ash is going to put like in a shadow box with some other things that's going to go in there with that. So, in order for us to be able to do that, we have to declare a surplus. And then because the value of the gun is over fifty dollars, we have to donate it to be sold for a dollar. I would ask for security purposes that tonight when you make your motion on this, you actually mention the revolver's serial number in your motion so that it gets recorded in the motion. This way, if something ever did happen with a handgun, forbid those thoughts. At least the council will be resolved of any liability because of that. So, if you would, please make sure you put that serial number in your motion.
Any questions from the council?
Can you afford a dollar?
It's a very nice gesture for Officer Martinez. Great idea. Any further questions or discussion regarding agenda item number twenty-one? If not, is there a motion regarding agenda item number twenty-one?
Go ahead and make a motion to declare this Glock Twenty-two handgun with serial number MME three thirty as surplus and authorize the unit to be sold as a gift for sale of a dollar.
You have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez and a second from Councilmember Douglas. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. This brings us to agenda item number twenty-two. Consideration and possible action in regard to awarding a contract to Dirt Boys Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars for the Doll Street and Jones Street Milling and Overlay Project and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Okay, so, a while back, we asked the council for some streets that they wanted to see milled and overlay. Doll and Jones was Councilman Douglas's choice. So, we have our bid in finally, you can see the bid tab relation sheet, Dirt Boys and Newberry were the two bidders on that. Dirt Boys came in with a bidder, and we do have excellent history with Dirt Boys doing streets in Kennedy. So, the recommendation is to give Dirt Boys the contract at the amount to exceed a minus seventy-six thousand dollars.
We're just doing that section from Fifth Street where it goes to the entrance of Taco Bell right there where it pulls in, right? Because the other one is Jones Street, or in terms.
Right, they're going to do both of them. They're going to do.
Oh, you're going to hit Jones also?
Right, they're going to do from the stop sign on Jones at seven nineteen.
So, you're including both roads?
Yes, for seventy-six thousand. And then the concrete ribbons are going to be another charge that they're willing to need to prove.
We have the funds for the roofs. We have the funds for the roofs.
We have the funds. Got two point four million dollars in tax code for three thousand dollars for them.
Any questions from the council or discussion regarding agenda item twenty-two? If there are no further questions or discussions, is there a motion regarding agenda item twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twenty-two.
You have a motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Councilmember Rodriguez. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item twenty-three. Consideration and possible action in regard to awarding a contract to Dirt Boys Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the Houston Street Milling and Overlay Project and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, so, this particular street came about for Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman Parker. It was kind of a joint effort on those two to identify the street, which is a good, good thing considering we did what we did with the truck signs and that, getting it repaired. So, as you can see from the bid tab relation sheet, Dirt Boys and Newberry were the only two bidders on that. And again, Dirt Boys came in with a low bid on that as well. So, the recommendation is that for Dirt Boys for the one hundred and ninety-two thousand, I'll take that one.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn? Any further discussion regarding agenda item twenty-three? If there are no further questions or discussions, is there a motion?
And go ahead and make a motion to award the bid to Dirt Boys Incorporated in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-two thousand for the Houston Street Milling and Overlay Project and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project.
I'll second.
You have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez and a second from Councilmember Douglas. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item twenty-four. Consideration and possible action on submitting a nomination to be considered for the vacant seat on the Carnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you.
Okay, it was not too long ago we cast our votes for all people to be on the board. Ms. Yanisak turned in her resignation early in April on the third, so that leaves a seat open. So, now, the CAD is, Mr. Stahl was asking for the municipalities within Carnes County Appraisal District to make recommendations of anyone they would like to see to be potentially nominated to be on the board. Of course, there'll be another election for that as well. So, that's why this item is on here. They have to, the person has to live within the CAD, and that's really the biggest requirement, other than they can't be in the government body or staff and stuff like that. Y'all know anybody.
Off the top of my head, I don't know anybody that would want to be on this board.
There's a deadline for this, correct?
Yes.
April?
Eighteenth.
April eighteenth.
I mean, we don't have to make the nomination, but they're asking because they're trying to, you know, get a list of people together to choose from.
Any ideas or suggestions from the council?
I mean, I don't know of anybody that has shown interest of wanting to be on this board. Do we know of anybody that would want to be on this board?
No, sir, I don't.
Nobody.
Of all the people I know, they're either already on two or three boards, and, you know, they're already volunteering and, you know.
But we have until the eighteenth that we could submit names to you and.
Yes, so if you guys go away from here tonight and you, you know, come up with somebody and you're talking, you know, give me their names as quickly as possible, and I'll email it to Mr. Stahl right away so that it's in before the eighteenth, so that person has a chance to be on the ballot.
Honor before the eighteenth by mail or fax or email. Okay.
Can we post something on our social media website?
We will, yes, sir. Yeah, since you all don't have a name tonight, I'll have Mr. Sharnes put something out there on Facebook and the website, Woods and that sad citizen, for those of you that have sad citizens as well. Okay? I agree with him.
Any further questions or discussion on agenda item twenty-four?
No action in this.
In the absence of any nominations denied, we will take no action on agenda item number twenty-four. Agenda item twenty-six. Consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty-two dash zero-two amending the City of Kennedy July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty adopted personnel policy adding Section thirteen point one nine mental health leave policy. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
So, when I was up in Granbury at the end of February, the other city managers were talking, one subject came up, it was mental health and, I don't know how to say it, but taking care of people that have had traumatic stress and things of that nature, PTSD. And one of the people who presented told us about that PTSD is not exactly just what you think it is for the individuals over cities who serve our country very well and saw what they saw. The example he gave was a volunteer fireman in a Texas municipality and was called out to a wreck as he's walking around the vehicle. He noticed one side there was a child that had been deceased, and as he walked around the other side of the car, some of the children was deceased. When he got up to the driver, he noticed that the driver, who was also deceased, was a fireman that he had actually worked with numerous, numerous times. And so, through his counseling and that, he learned he had PTSD, how it affected him and things of that nature. I can't really do justice to the man's testimony. It's very heart, heart moving, and it's a very sad story. The legislature did ask this as a mandate, that homeowners and allies are supposed to adopt a mental health leave policy for their police officers and their first responders. One of the great things about what I learned being up there in Granbury was the City of Nacogdoches, they drew up their policy to also incorporate their, their city workers because you never know what city workers go through outside of the workroom and that, and we should be able to provide for them as well. So, the policy you have before is a morphed policy from the City of Nacogdoches and their attorneys down there morphed it over for us and maybe it'll put a vote to the City of Kennedy. And this policy, by adding it to our personnel annual, will now provide the required state that the state required leave for all police officers and all city personnel that might be suffering or mentally illness, so we'll be able to take care of that aspect.
Any questions from the council?
I have one question. Does my, I love this, I think this is awesome. The only question I have is on the request and approval process? Because I want to make sure that we're following HIPAA. If, do they have to be descriptive in their request, or can they just simply state, hey, I would like to request mental health leave based on the incident that occurred? They don't have to go into like graphic details and say, well, this is what I'm experiencing and this is why?
No. They do not have to go into that. You know, one of the other things this individual said his testimony is that, you know, we, we as, you know, workers for the city, and whether it be city manager or police officer, you know, especially the guys, and we all get this macho mentality in our brains, that I can handle it, it's not me, it's not that, and we don't seek help. Or we, or we're afraid to seek help for free, we're determined. And that's one of the reasons why all this came about, so that we can't do that. So, anyone who would need help does not need to provide any description. They just need to let us know that they want to take this leave. It's one of those things that we're not really allowed to ask or drill down on. We have to just go ahead and go.
Any further questions or discussion on this agenda?
Well, one question. This will be, because it's thirty-six hours, right?
Yes.
That's what it said. So, they'll just, is this going to be something that everybody, are they going to see that they have this, like they would, check stuff, things like that with everything else, like this is how many sick days I have, this is how many?
Well, we're not going to actually track it like that on there, like we do our vacation and our sick time. But whenever they are taking that time, we will, we will create a level down there kind of like what we're going to do for the COLA and what we do for certification, maybe it'll say, you know, mental health leave. And then we'll put the number of hours that they need for that for patients, you know.
And that's like every, every year, they'll get thirty-six hours?
Yes, sir.
So, if they just reach out to you, that's all they have to?
Yes, sir.
They only have to go to the doctor to get diagnosed or that they're having a problem?
Well, yeah, they would need to go to the doctor, but they, they would just need to, they don't need to provide me with anything in detail. All they need to say is, I want to see my doctor of this, and I need to take advantage of our, our mental health leave, and I have to let them have it. So, that's, it's just that's it.
I think this is great. I'm surprised we didn't have this sooner.
And it doesn't go against their sick time or vacation time or anything. This is completely something that's in addition to all of that. So, they don't get dinged for anything. So, that thirty-six hours.
Any further questions from the council?
Very good, thank you.
If there are no further questions or discussion, is there a motion regarding agenda item twenty-six?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twenty-six.
You have a motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Schultz. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item twenty-seven. Consideration and possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items relating to Section seven point zero nine Complaints and Grievances Procedure of the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty adopted personnel policy. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you.
Hey, this was something that had come across my desk and that we talked about bringing up. There was something else that we had talked about involving myself personally for the month of June. We do have another item on this agenda to set a workshop for. And unless you want to do these workshops concurrently in the same day, what I would ask is that maybe we set this particular workshop for the same day that we set the meeting that we're going to do for me in June and do those two on the same day because they're kind of hand in hand. And then we do this other one in the month of, what, we're in April. Because April's a pretty shortened month with what we got left and with what we got going on to squeeze in two workshops. So, that's just a suggestion. I think we'll do it where you guys choose to do. That's what I'm asking, if you all would be willing to do that. Just move this grievance one until June and do it at the same time that we sit down.
I have no problem with that, as long as, I, I just don't want to be in part of a regular meeting because, you know, we get sidetracked. When we're doing regular meetings, we're doing, we're conducting city business. And these workshops are better even by themselves. So, I have no problem with it, as does the council.
And can we, can we just table this for the May meeting?
Right.
Because we haven't set the June workshop yet.
Right, and then I'll, I'll just put this back on as a line item to set the date. But I was, it was kind of asked of me of several councilmembers to put it on this agenda. So, I wanted to keep with that so that I at least got it on this agenda so we can move it forward like that.
Yeah.
We can put them both together.
Because I mean, I'm going to be honest, it's hard to pick a date with two people out.
Yeah, no, tonight is hard to, we don't know what their schedules are.
Right.
We all should be there, all five of us.
Yes, especially for this.
Yeah.
So, just a procedural question from Ms. Gadd. Do we need a motion to set this aside for the May meeting?
Sure, yes.
Okay, is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion to set aside agenda item twenty-seven.
You have a motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Rodriguez. I will now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item twenty-eight. Consideration and possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to partnering with the San Antonio Food Bank pertaining to implementing a quarterly food distribution pantry and/or permanent food pantry within the municipal limits. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you.
Okay, this was the other item that I just alluded to. So, on this particular item, the city council had asked me to get some rough numbers on things. So, I reached out to Mr. Robledo at the San Antonio Food Bank, and the numbers she kind of sent me. and the numbers he kind of sent me back just for rough numbers to give you off something. He believes that twenty-five hundred dollars for about eleven pallets of food or five thousand for around twenty-two pallets of food. And he believes, based upon our population, I guess, everything he's seen down here, that he believes eleven pallets of food might be able to feed around two hundred and fifty households. Okay, so that's kind of what we're looking at there. Mr. Obletto and I did talk in some detail, and he is more than eager to come down to the workshop to have a long presentation about both a food distribution point as well as possibly what the cost will be. And I know it was Mr. Dubnik's idea at the last meeting about a food pantry. So I did talk to Mr. Obletto about that as well, so he's willing to put that out there for us. So we just need to pick a date for that and Mr. Obletto may as well put it to his calendar.
Shelley, you talked to the council about this at our last meeting. Do you have any updated information to present or anything to say?
No, I really haven't. I know that our current food bank is division is even larger. And we've been, the problem is, is that we have problems getting volunteers to come in to help. And I was hoping the superintendent would still be here for Kennedy High School, but a lot of the kids are doing the community service for like National Society and stuff like that, and they've been coming back, some of them wanting to come back because it's been rewarding for them to help pass out food. I think the Councilman Douglas has been there as well and has helped us with that. I know that everything is going up, and so you have more and more people asking, looking for help. The Thrift Center has set up a pantry, I believe, mainly just canned goods, non-perishable stuff like that. Methodist Church in Corinth City has, I think they've set up one as well. I think the pantry, to me, I still believe it is the best route to go if possible because I think you get more money for your, for your amount of food that you get. But I really applaud all of you all for entertaining this idea because this gives something back to the community.
I think you mentioned there's a need for refrigerated items, which we're currently meeting. It's just canned goods and dry goods now that are at local pantries, correct?
Correct. If you set up a pantry, they, you know, they want you to have a, if you have like a refrigerator, something in the freezer you can keep stuff in, you get better quality of food, and you can consume those types of items, like meat as well as some vegetables, you know, fridge and fruit that you can hold for a long time. But it's, and then you have to make some, you know, certain restrictions. You gotta keep the food off the floor and shell, you know, some sort, but it's not that big a deal. But you're more selective with what you get when you go to the pantry. At least that is my understanding.
Thank you, Shelby. Yeah, with the runaway inflation, there's an ever-growing need in this regard. There's no doubt about that. And we're kind of in the same boat in terms of scheduling a workshop with two councilmembers present.
I mean, the million-dollar question, I would say is, is there a way, is there a date even possible to have this before the next meeting? Because if not, then the best case would be, again, to put this on the next meeting agenda.
You know, I was looking at April twenty-sixth. That's a Tuesday, six P.M. This is free for me. I don't know how it works for the rest of you. Of course, we have two councilmembers that aren't present. That's two weeks from today. Is that that date?
I'm available that day.
I can do that.
Hopefully, the other councilmembers will be available? In that case, it's very new.
I'm not absolutely positive. I've got a, we have a graduating senior granddaughter that's, you know, got a lot of stuff going on right now in another community. And I do have a list, but it's on my spots. You know, that's my bulletin board.
So you may or may not be available.
I'm gonna say yes for right now, but I'll certainly let you guys know when I get home and I find that different.
Okay.
Right now, I'm gonna say no.
Or we could just go ahead, as Councilman Douglas said, just go ahead and put it off to the May agenda. I mean, because if Councilwoman Schultz can't be here, and we don't know about the other two, then we get in the same boat of convening and not having enough people to do anything.
We need four, four, four.
An idea from Mario to drive down?
Right, because we?
Could you reach out to the Councilman Parker and Councilman Science tomorrow and find out if they can be?
What I can do is I can do like I was calling a special meeting. I can just go around and ask the councilmembers if you're available on this date, and then I'll ask them if he's available on this date. As long as I get enough people to reply and they're responsive, I can schedule the workshop for that date. And then I'll get with Mr. Obletto and see if he's available on that date, so.
I think it would be better than to put it on a regular meeting. If we can do it in two weeks, let's get it out of the way.
Okay.
Hope Sandra can be here.
I hope I can. May is really bad. May is.
Yeah, May's really bad. May's really bad.
When you have a child who's involved in so many things.
Start testing and EOC testing, maybe just get some.
Is there a motion regarding Agenda Item Twenty-eight?
I'll make a motion to take no action.
Do we want to set it aside, or can the double direct Mr. Lynn to coordinate?
Coordinate.
Yeah.
See if we can get everybody on in two weeks.
Yes, I'll make a motion to coordinate the city manager to, to?
The workshop.
Coordinate the?
Set it eight in time for the workshop.
Eight in time for the workshop.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. I'll now call the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Agenda Item Twenty-nine. Items to consider replacement on future agendas. Governing body, city manager, city attorney. Does anyone have any items to consider replacement on a future agenda? If not, then we will take no action on Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine and move to Agenda Item Number Thirty. Announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Governing body, city manager, city secretary. Does anyone have the announcement?
The Carnes County Collection Event, May seventh.
No tractor tires.
This is a very important event for our household.
Please, no.
And I got two big tractor tires I need to get rid of. Come on, Shelby.
They're bound to be across the, somewhere that once was died.
Don't forget Bluebonnet.
I got the.
Quick question about Bluebonnet Days since the city's having a float. Will we just be told what time and where to meet for that?
That would be a question for her.
Amy, do you have any information on where we need to be in regards to climbing on the float for Bluebonnet Days Parade?
Check-in is at nine A.M. in the Ashland parking lot.
Okay. So we should all just meet there?
Yes.
You don't want to pick me up on the way?
I can if you want.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I can email that to you as well.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of hopeful that Jolene would be here this evening, as she usually is, but she's probably very busy getting ready for Bluebonnet Day since we are just ten days away. So just as a reminder, Kennedy's Bluebonnet Days is coming back, and I am very happy about that. I think most people are very happy about that, and it's ten days for today. Friday, April twenty-second, Saturday, April twenty-third. There is going to be food and craft vendors, triple heat barbecue cook-offs, musical entertainment Friday evening and Saturday evening, downtown parade Saturday morning, kids' activities, food and craft vendors, cornhole tournament, which Councilmember Parker is very involved with, and it looks to be a wonderful, great event out at Joe Gully Park, and I'm very much looking forward to it. Any further announcements or from the council? If not, then it is seven twenty P.M., and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.